We're at the city council and we will open with our invocation and a pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this afternoon and thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord, pertaining to the business of our city. And, Lord, we just pray you'd give us wisdom tonight in all things, that you'd be glorified in all things. We give you the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thank you so much for coming to our city council meeting tonight. We have a full agenda, but we have good things on the agenda that hopefully we'll be able to find the perfect solution for them. At this time, we recognize any visitors that have turned in requests. We have no visitors that have a request to be made. Any general comments from the council?
I have one, Mayor, and I do have some flyers out on the table and in front of y'all. But this weekend, during the Thanksgiving break, we'll be doing our large item drop-off event, cleanup event out at the Piney Woods sanitation yard on Durant, right on the inside of the Loop, on the lake road. And you can bring a pickup load or a trailer load, household items, non-commercial. There's a few fees in there for if you have the bigger, older-style TVs with the CRT tube monitors with the mercury in it, I believe. And then there's also a charge if there's no freon and air conditioning units and refrigerators. If there is, there's a small charge for that and a small charge for the tires, but everything else is free, kind of geared to cleaning up your garage and back porch or whatever, furniture, anything you need to haul off. And it's free for City of Crockett residents.
I know this is a great opportunity that you don't have to pay for most of the stuff, but you can take it out and get it. So we do appreciate that opportunity. You just don't want to forget the date.
It's eight in the morning to noon this Saturday.
Okay, so you don't have all day. So you gotta get up and get running. You not have all day, eight to twelve. So that's very important to remember. Okay, with that being said, at this time, it brings us to item number one, our regular session approval of minutes. Everyone has a copy.
I make a motion we approve.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Brings us to item number two, reports, the Police Department Manpower and Criminal Incident Report for October 2024.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Administrator. That's Police Department Manpower Criminal Activity Report for October 2024. Sixteen officers worked 3,050 hours, responded to 409 calls for service, investigated nine traffic accidents, made 21 arrests, issued 288 traffic citations, completed 56 reports, responded to 25 alarm calls. Twenty-one of those were false alarm. Below, you'll see a breakdown of our criminal incident report. I want to entertain any questions y'all have about that.
Yeah, left my own desk, but it looked good when I looked at it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you. At this time, we have the Fire Department Monthly Activity and Status Report for October 2024.
Good evening, mayors, council members.
For the month of October, we had a total of 48 calls, 30 people being inside the city limits, 16 individuals in their community area. There's some fire inside the city. We were talking about October. There's a total breakdown of 20 hours.
What is our status for fire burn? Are we still under?
As of last week, we issued fire warnings for inside the city. You can burn, but burn rate has been reported.
Okay, great.
We were ready to break the code of the ring yet, so we're probably.
So it is lifted. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it brings us to business, item number four. Consider and approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Crockett, Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificate of Obligation Series 2024A, taxable, authorizing execution and delivery of a paying agent, registered agreement and escrow agreement relating to such certificates, prescribing the form of said certificates, levying a tax and pledging surplus revenues of the water and sewer system in payment thereof and enacting other provisions related thereto.
Hey, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'm gonna give just a quick update.
Thanks.
I forgot to update y'all. We did send out, we emailed out the packets, but they were 141 pages apiece. And so we didn't print them out. If any of you want a printed copy, we can print them right now. I'm putting them up on the screen and they're available on your emailer in your phone if you wanted to pull them up there. But if you want some, I'll print it out off right now.
I'm good. I'm good.
Everybody okay? So that being said, I saw y'all were, y'all were looking for the packets. So we have Mr. Ben Rosenberg. He is our finance advisor here tonight, as well as Mr. Jonathan Frills. He's our bond counsel, has been assisting us on this project. We've been working on it for about a year now, give or take. And so we've finally gotten to this point to where we can close on this, send it in and get funded within the next few weeks. And I'm gonna rely heavily on them for input and information. Go ahead. This is, this is for both of our water well project and our wastewater treatment plant project. Our wastewater treatment plant project, as you know, was put in in the 1970s and most of it is still all original equipment. This will provide the funding to rehab our wastewater treatment plant as well as increase the capacity of it. We're currently at 2 million gallons per day and the capacity, we're proposing to increase the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant. All excess funds that are not used in the wastewater treatment plant can be used within the wastewater treatment or the wastewater collection system. So sewer mains, manholes throughout our system, we don't plan on turning any of this money down and sending it back to them.
Nope.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, so there's actually six items on the agenda that we're gonna be talking about. The first three are for the sewer plant and the next three are for the drinking water treatment system. So I'm gonna talk about the transactions with Jonathan Frills. We'll make sure everything gets signed and proven legally. But we started this project actually in January of last year. When we looked at, the engineer put together these projects. We submitted applications to the Water Development Board last year and finally got to the point to where they awarded us some free monies and some low interest loans. And so tonight is when we're actually borrowing the money and accepting the free money. So that's what we're actually doing with all those documents, 44 pages of documents. If you, on page three, the number of three at the bottom, here we are November 18th. This is the type of the following. Tonight is what we call the sale base. The award is the ordinance creating optimization of the certificates and accepting the free money. Once, if you approve all these tonight, then you take all the paperwork back tonight. And there's a bunch of things we still have to do between now and then that you'll have your money on December 16th. So a nice little Christmas time present for the city of the progression of water and sewer needs. All right, so on the clean water side, which is the sewer treatment plant, I would like to go back and say, what are we doing here? So page four and five, wastewater treatment plant, the flexibilities, repairs and improvements. On page five, the original estimate, the engineer puts back, back in March of last year. See the description there on page five of what they're gonna be doing with the water treatment plant. The total project is 11.15 million dollars. The Water Development Board, they're trying to help us address these issues. So page six, we'll see about 11 million. 3.1 million is a zero interest loan. 1.1 million and 2.6 are low interest, the low market loan. And then 7.3 million dollars are free money. So that equals 11.6 million dollars. So they are really helping us address the city's needs. In the end, I'll show you how we're gonna afford all this stuff, but that's the breakdown. It's on page six. These are 30-year loans. The Water Development Board requires you to make payments for 10 years. After 10 years, if you want to, you could read the balance or pay off or you have options to do that afterward. They call it 10-year call feature. Again, the biggest loan, 3 million dollars, is zero interest. And because of that, you requested that it be issued taxable. And that's to the, to the underwriting and any potential event. That means you, if you borrow taxes and money and zero interest, you can't earn the interest on it because it's an IRS department. But if you do it taxable, all that 3 million dollars in the bank, you can earn interest on that money. So that's why that money is taxable.
Makes sense.
Okay, so that applies to people that are no interest on that money. So that 3 million dollars, sooner it goes in the bank next month, you can start earning whatever you have in CDs or treasuries or 4% or 4.5% on that money, you can earn some money on that. So that's why we did that. There is one interest payment due in the fiscal year, current fiscal year. So we borrow now in October, November. You've already started the fiscal year. You don't have that money in the budget, but the $19,000 interest payment due next August, we're gonna have to come up with, but I think we can, surely we can come up with that. It's not gonna be a problem. So then I have all the debt service numbers. They're starting on page eight is what we call the final debt service numbers. These are the actual loan interest rate and payments. If someone had to pay it for the next 30 years, that would be fixed. So everything else in our world will be, is still variable, your SaaS valuation, your budget every year, but your payments will be fixed every year. You don't have to worry about any variables there. And showing this on page 10, 11, 12. So 11 is the mortgage rate of the 3.1 million in low interest. And then page 12 shows the low market interest rates on 1.1 million dollar loan. And that blended, the present value average of that is 2.6. So on that loan, you can earn up to that amount of interest on the loan because while that's in the bank, it's something up there. And then on page 13 shows your 14, shows your combined semi-in the payments for the next 30 years. That's for that first payment is due to $19,000. So that's the clean water system. Any question on the clean water side?
It looks good.
All right, so on the drinking water side, starting on page 16, this is for the development of the groundwater management improvement facilities. That total project is worth 4 million. And out of 4 million, they're giving us 1 million dollars of free money and 3.2 million in the low market interest rate of approximately 2.8%. Comparing that with the mortgage rates are today, you know, a car rate today, the interest rates, that's a very good deal for 30 years for fixed payment for the city. Also 30 years, 2.816 interest rate. And there is an interest payment on those loans of $56,000 in this payment in this fiscal year. So you have to hold that. And then starting on page 20 is all debt service numbers for the drinking water loan. And then three shows the semi-in payments there, 4000 semi-in payments there. There's a $56,000 interest payment. And so it's involved in the drinking water side. So out of the paper there, most of all, last page, one page after page 27. So this announces the Water Development Board views to look at affordability and make sure that you have revenue sufficient to cover the debt service. So we're using 2023 revenue audit and that's the last audit we have. And those shows, shows total revenues for the water sewer system of 599,000. Your current debt to USDA loan that you already have is about 142. It's 450 in October. And all these three loans together, your total debt payment is about 330. So you have more than adequate, they require 1.0 coverage. You can see your well over 1.3, 1.4 debt coverage ratio. And that was on 2023. 24 even a little higher. So that's an analysis. They show that you can afford this without any rate increases, to cover existing debt, no additional taxes or bar to cover the debt. It's such, such a great deal because you're dealing so much free money and the low market interest rates and zero interest loan. So we feel very confident, your financial advisor, to recommend approval of these to really help the city get all their infrastructure in place. From long after me, I prefer you. We're gonna make sure you make one payment.
I won't leave.
But we won't, but we won't leave anybody in bad shape. We'll, we'll leave them. So.
Now, the sewer, the sewer part, that's taking care of our growth also?
It, it does address, right now, our treatment capacity at our plant. Many times, is that capacity, a lot of it is because of the amount of stormwater that we take in through our, through our system, you know, pour manholes, clay tile pipes, things of that nature. That brings us up to the treatment capacity because we're treating a kind of a mix of sewer and stormwater. So that's why we're, we're wanting to address any excess funds that we do have in this towards doing a smoke test throughout our city, prioritizing all of the projects that where we're, where we are taking in stormwater in creeks and sewers and things of that nature, or creeks that are going, dumping into our sewer system where we're, we end up treating a lot of stormwater. So it does increase the capacity of it.
So it does make it better.
The, the goal is to increase it to a 6 million, yes, sir. That's what we're, from a 2 million.
Well, we're increasing for growth, I mean.
Absolutely. But a lot of it is just, just replacement of all the infrastructure that we have out there. We have clarifiers that are down. One of them, one of them council just approved for us to initiate the, we, we adopted a resolution, a reimbursement resolution to allow us to go out and get the clarifier fixed ahead of time and then reimburse us through the proceeds of this. And so it's just, we have really old infrastructure out there, primarily from the 70s, and it's, you know, 40 to 50 years old at this point. So it's, it's due for all replacement as well as increasing the capacity of it for growth.
Yeah, the good thing about it, where you said we were in, we had a good score, so we were in a good position that we hadn't been in in a long time, that they would loan us money at a better rate than we've had in a while. So we're getting a good rate. We're addressing something that's gonna have to be addressed whether we want to or not because it's required by law. And we'll be in a position to go forth, but it won't be a strain on the people that come in the future. Sounds like a, and then we got free money.
Just to, and just to advise council, I had mentioned it earlier, but I do, I do want to just continue recommending to council that throughout this process, there's $80,000 within this project that will be allocated to an asset management where, where all of our assets are brought in and depreciated, where we can find out how old everything is and what it's gonna cost, when it's due for replacement, and what are our big priorities out there. So we can really put together a depreciation schedule and a replacement schedule. The Water District is currently undergoing theirs as well, so I want to use numbers from, from them with recommendations from engineers, bring that back to council and do a rate study, do a rate study. We do have coverage. That, that coverage that we've been, that's been going to our utility reserve account. Any excess revenues, we're setting that aside for these rainy days, for these projects, for, for the, you know, that we need to be setting aside. But this is also going to be biting into the amount of money that we've been setting aside. So I really want to be sure that we don't start cheating ourselves down the road and not setting money
Aside.
aside to address our infrastructure. We need to continue being aggressive at, at not pushing the can down for 50 years and then be in the situation we are right now.
Yeah. So with, with that being said, would that include, do we have any, I guess, do we have any deficit or any balance left over from the 2024 budget? Or how does that work? To apply, to, to apply, you know, for infrastructure or whatever's needed for the city?
Well, yes, it all, I mean, each year, any revenues, any, any revenues that we end up with goes, goes into our fund balance. And that's what's, that's what's used to create our next year's budget as well. But this would be our utility, our utility budget. We have a fund O2, which is our utility water and sewer revenues. And that's what we plan on playing it for, not out of our general fund. So essentially, any monies that we don't, don't spend in one budget here, yes, ma'am, those go into our fund balance.
Anyone else have any questions?
Any questions on the numbers? Okay, thank you very much. So yeah, I think the first up is just, it's like six items that we were.
So that's what they're all saying, the next.
Yes, ma'am. So like he explained, they're, they're broken down for the different interest rates. The issuances are broken down by ordinance for, I believe, three for our drinking, our clean water, three of them, and two for.
John, so I'm gonna walk through which.
That'd be good.
Okay, we'll, we'll walk through that real quick. Mayor, mayors, council, my name's Jonathan Frills. I'm a great fellow. We serve as y'all's bond counsel. Quickly walk you through the ordinances. Item number four, which is the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Series 2024A Certificate of Obligation. That's the zero interest loan for the clean water projects that Ben was telling you about. Item number five, which is the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the Series 2024B COs is for the low interest loan for clean water. So that's that one. Item number six is the principal forgiveness agreement for the clean water program. So that's what Ben mentioned there. Item number seven, which is the Certificate of Obligation Series 2024C for the drinking water. It's the blended, the blended rate for the drinking water. So it's a combination of zero interest and low interest, all done as a single series. And then item number eight is the principal forgiveness agreement that goes with the drinking water fund. So those are the, the five items that are related to the TWPD financings that Ben talked about. And I'm happy to walk through any of those to the extent that it would be useful. Again, the ordinances are your contract with the Texas Water Development Board. It lays out what your responsibilities are for repaying and the principal forgiveness agreement. It's your responsibility under that grant. And it approves the principal forgiveness agreement, which is essentially a grant agreement that lays out your obligations and relates to this. But again, happy to walk through in detail and that it would be.
And those are done by resolution?
Yeah. So we know what you're gonna do with it. We know what the money's gonna come for. And so it's not anything new that we have.
No.
It's just the process that you're.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're on item number four currently that you, that you.
I need to read.
I believe you've already read.
Okay, we read them. We, we, we did four, and now we read five.
No, we just, we needed to get a vote.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I make a motion we approve, now, item number four.
My seconded motion. Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item number five.
Move that we consider and approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Crockett, Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Cert- Certificate of Obligation Series 2024B, authorizing execution and delivery of a paying agent, registered agreement and an escrow agreement relating to such certificates, prescribing the form of said certificates, levying a tax and pledging surplus revenues of the water and sewer system in payment thereof and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item number six.
If you don't mind, if you, if you can read the, read the items and then a vote can just be made on that item.
Okay, here we go. Item number six. Consider and approve a resolution by the City, City Council of the City of Crockett, Texas, approving a principal forgiveness agreement with the Texas Water Development Board under the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing the mayor as the designated representative of the city to execute the principal forgiveness agreement and approving other matters related thereto.
Mayor and council, I approve the, to consider and approve the resolution number six on the agenda item.
I second.
Okay, you make the motion and it's been second, all in favor. Okay, item number seven. Consider and approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Crockett, Texas Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificate of Obligation Series 2024C, authorizing execution and delivery of a paid, paying agent, registered agreement and escrow agreement relating to such certificates, prescribing the form of said certificate, levying a tax and pledging surplus revenues of the water and sewer system in payment thereof and engaging other provisions related thereto.
I make a motion we approve item number seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item number eight. Consider and approve a resolution by the City Council of the City of Crockett, Texas, approving a principal forgiveness agreement with the Texas Water Development Board under the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund and authorizing the mayor as the designated representative of the city to execute the principal forgiveness agreement and approving other matters related thereto.
Mayor and council, I approve, uh, I, I move, move that we consider and approve number, agenda item number eight.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been a motion approved, all in favor. Okay, item number nine. Consider and approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crockett, Texas, providing for the replacement of the escrow depository registered bank for the City of Crockett, Texas Revenue Bonds Series 2019A and the City of Crockett, Texas Revenue Bonds Series 2019B, approving the form and substance of related documents, authorizing city officials to execute notices and agreements related thereto and approving other matters related thereto.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution subsequent to our USDA issuance in 2019. We had a, an escrow paying agent Wilmington Trust that we had entered into an agreement with, and they performed all the bond, they cashed the bonds for us from the USDA. And then whenever we made draws, they would send them to us. As of this point, we don't currently use a paying agent, but under the agreement through USDA, we're required to maintain a paying agent throughout the life of the USDA loan. So we have 30 years to, to keep this paying agent. We don't really need their services, but my understanding is we agreed to keep this paying agent. So, that being said, Wilmington Trust, the ones we were using throughout this process to this point, they charged us $2,000 a year for 2019A and $1,000 for 2019B. So each year, we had to pay this fee and throughout the life, life of this loan. Through our dealings with Bank of America, BOKF. Bank of Texas. BOKF, that's right. So BOKF, that was a one-time $500 fee. We pay a $500 fee once and, and don't have to pay an annual fee. So our recommendation is that we transfer or we move our paying agent, we issue termination notice to Wilmington Trust and BOKF would take over our paying agent services for the USDA loan.
So that $500 fee would be for the life of them?
Yes, ma'am.
Instead of the $3,000?
Instead of $3,000 each year.
Sounds like a good trade. Okay.
The US, a motion we, we move to Wilmington Trust.
I second it.
From Wilmington Trust to BOKF?
Yeah, to BOKF, yeah.
Okay, got a motion?
Second it.
Second, all in favor. Motion carries. Item number 10. Consider approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crockett, Texas, authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund. application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund. Seeking money, right?
Yes, ma'am. So this is a CDBG, this is the new application period for the, our next round of CDBG grants. They've increased the project to seven hundred and fifty thousand from five hundred thousand. But there's still a ten percent match requirement of, so that'd be seventy-five thousand. The CDBG project can, and, and we'll bring this back to council, is what we'll do. And we'll do it as part of a public hearing, because now public hearings are also required, where minutes are taken and the community can provide input of what they believe their, some of the priorities are. And the, the city will present some, some needs-based recommendations and then y'all can approve what to apply it towards. So they go through street projects, sewer, water projects, sidewalks, anything that, you know, government projects that we can put it to. So I, I would recommend that we can go ahead and submit the application for this, for this CDBG grant.
My question, when I got hired, you didn't want to, to complete the application?
It, it all includes requirements for grant administration. We're required to have a grant administrator to file it. But those will all be brought back to council as well. Actually, no, I apologize, I'll take that back. This is the one that council already approved at our last meeting. When we approved the grant writer and administrator at our last meeting. This is in relation to that, we've already done that portion. I apologize. This is the CDBG one. The one we haven't done yet is the next agenda item.
Okay.
So we need a motion now?
Yes, we need a motion.
I make a motion, we approve item number ten.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries.
And just as a, just as a, one additional note, council, this is, this is one of the reasons that we, we really recommend the grant writer. For instance, we got a little ahead of it. Our, the last one that we brought to council, it include, they used to accept the submission, the agenda language and resolution for the submission and approving the grant writer in the same resolution. This last, this last month, they changed, completely changed the rules and said there's another separate resolution to submit it. We've already approved the grant writer to go ahead and submit the grant. But now there's different wording required within the submission of the grant that requires a resolution specific. So we're having to update that to council. And so that's kind of the, to help y'all understand why we need somebody that really knows what they're doing and up to date with each month worth of, of, you know, their, their updates.
Thank you. That one is already passed, so we're on item number eleven.
Ten.
It'd be eleven.
Eleven?
Yeah, ten we finished. That was what we just did, and we're up to eleven. Consider and approve authorizing the submission of an Assistant to Firefighters Grant Program application to the Federal Emergency, Emergency Management Agency FEMA and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to act as the city's authorized representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program.
Mayor and council, this, uh, this grant that we're wanting to apply for, we're wanting to apply for funding for radios. It's been a debt cog initiative throughout our region, well, throughout Texas, trying to move to better communication. The radios that we currently use are P twenty-five, they're digital, VHF radios. However, the, the big, the next step in communication is seven, eight hundred megahertz radio systems. They're trunking, you can, if you're in a, say, for instance, you're in a pursuit and as soon as you leave our county, you go dead. You know, you, you, you have no one to talk to. This trunking systems, you can go from multiple county to county and pick up to their next dispatch, their next nine-one-one dispatch. There're trunking systems that allow you to, if there's a, a chase coming in from Houston, they can talk to RPD without having our channels in their system, which, you know. So that and just really getting, getting better communication.
Is this for firefighters or police?
So, the, so our, we're wanting police and fire. This is a project, this is a project that will only pay for, it's a, it's a FEMA project specific for fire departments. So we're trying, you know, we're going to try to...
I was just trying to figure out why firefighters are going to be going next county, county, county.
No, yeah, you're right. So I got a little carried away on that one. But now the FEMA, the, 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 the need for the radios is to where everybody can communicate. That was a, you know, the firefighters, if they go to another county for wildfires or they have other, you know, fire departments come in here, they can communicate and talk. But the biggest deal is all the systems that our nine-one-one dispatch have, if they go to eight hundred for PD, we want everybody to be on the same system to where we can all talk to each other. Where even when the fire, the police department finally get their funding, then the fire department wouldn't be able to talk to them anymore. So we just, we're trying to get all the systems into the same eight hundred megahertz radio systems.
And I, I mean, I've just seen the rationale for why you all have to be able to talk. Now, when they have emergency, they call that the fire, the police, the, it's like somewhere, ambulance, like five, different agencies all show up and they were trying to explain how you talk among each other and keep changing the channels, so.
I know, I remember when I used to work as a paramedic for ETMC, twen, you know, eighteen, twenty years ago, we had eight hundred megahertz systems then. You know, so that's, that, that's definitely the system that we really need to, you know, to improve our communications with. But this is one piece of the pilot that could be funded by FEMA funds. And we'll bring back the information once we go out and get bids, what our requirements are, what we're agreeing to. This allows us to go and ask for the, submit the grant. If we're successful, then we can bring back bids and tell you how much we're committing to before we spend the money.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay.
So forward's the application?
This one, we are filling it out ourselves, yes, ma'am. We're writing, we are writing this one. It doesn't, it's, I actually have written a couple AFG grants and they're complicated, but it doesn't, they're built more for the layperson.
For the job.
So we're not hiring a grant writer for this one.
Okay. Any other questions? Can we get a motion?
I make a motion and we approve item number eleven.
Second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Motion carries. And that brings us to item number twelve, consider and approve updates to Personnel Policy Manual.
Mayor and council, we're, we're trying to do this at least once a year to keep it, our policy manual updated as required by law or any of our current operations. I have a summary sheet on page one hundred and twelve. I have a, a summary sheet that broke, broke down the, so I'll read it real quick, just to, just to touch on the items that we're updating. One is our latest legislature gave us a deadline that at the end of, by the end of this year, all governments within the state of Texas, all political subdivisions have to have policy relating to social media on government-issued devices, cell phones, computers that TikTok, specific to TikTok. But they found that there's been a lot of hacking and different ways that TikTok platform was used to gain entry into government-issued devices. So we have to, we're required by law to adopt that one. The next one is addressing to our on-call duty. We had one policy addressing callouts, but it didn't completely address all of our callout brackets. This is addressing to the persons that are, that carry the emergency callout phone for nights and weekends, anytime that there's either a sewer backup or a, or storm comes in where barricades need to be put out on the, on the road and shut, you know, shut down for flooding or any kind of callouts. We have one person that's on a, on standby and has an emergency cellphone. And then we have standby pay for when we're, whenever we go into ready mode for bad weather events, hurricane, tornado, you know, any kind of bad weather events, maybe a really bad freeze that's, so whenever we want to get people that are not expected, but we want to know that we at least have three people, you know, two to three people that are, are going to be in town and ready to respond. And we don't have to call and find out that, you know, one of them went to a wedding and this one left and this one is not, is not ready for work and disposed or whatever. So, and then we have rounds pay, which is all of our wastewater plants, they have to come in all weekends and do their, their daily checks to be sure that all the pumps are running, as well as when, when we're renting out our pavilions or parks over the weekend. It's an expected callout, it, or it's an expected project, it's not an emergency callout. Because it was really costing us quite a bit in overtime, the way we were currently lumping them all together.
So basically, this, this process here, councils overtime or?
No, 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 ma'am. We're required by law.
That's what I'm saying, so they, so what I'm saying is that, that this will be in addition to their work hours? Will they get overtime or not?
Yes, ma'am. Anytime that, anytime that an employee works more than forty hours a week, that we're required by law to, to pay them. But this will, this, this helps our employees and our supervisors. This, our supervisors, we sat down and went over this policy to help better address some of our, our expenditures.
To schedule.
To, to where it's, there, it's, it's based on a schedule, not an emergency callout. Because we were paying two hours, two hour minimum overtime for, for all of these that were already scheduled. They weren't emergencies. Salary administration, within our salary administration, we didn't have a, and it came to light during our last, when our utility superintendent resigned, we had to have somewhat body that was dedicated as our city, uh, utility superintendent. So until that position is posted and filled, we needed to be able to have a temporary assignment built into our policy that allowed, allowed someone to step up and fill those roles until someone else is hired or that person can be hired officially. A travel expense reimbursement. And this, this formally adopts a travel, a travel expense reimbursement. Up until now, we really haven't had a travel expense policy to where our employees or anyone going on city business somewhere knows how much their per diem is, their mileage, and it's an easy reimbursement form that they can fill out and return back.
They're used to standard state mileage?
Yes, ma'am. Standard state mileage and standard state per diem for, for meals also.
Said it'll be reflected.
Yes, ma'am, for meals as well.
Yeah, that's standard procedure.
And then the, the last one was the, the, the pay plan. The pay rate council approved as of October one, the two percent COLA. So all of our pay rates were adjusted to reflect the two percent. So that's kind of a summary on that one.
So, so two of them would kind of balance out in terms of the overtime, you'd be able to better prepare for it. It won't just be going on unbalanced. You know who's doing it and it won't just be pulled out. Because sometime you have someone to stand up and with someone to do the overtime.
We have really, we have really good, we have really good people, but there became some miscommunication and misunderstanding of...
I understand, I, because it is, when you need it, you need them, but you just want them to be as already assigned.
I make a motion, we approve the updates on Personnel Policy Manual.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Another policy.
Are there questions on it that I can...
Personnel policy, you have to have personnel policy. What was the question? Did you have a question on it?
Well, I'd like to make a motion. I can make a motion?
Yes, ma'am, unless you have questions that I can answer first or...
I said, was, is there a question? I said some motion on the floor.
No, 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 it's, no, there's, no, it's no question.
Okay. If it was something related to this agenda item.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, like I said, it's a motion.
So we need to get the motions of those opposed.
Okay, we do, it, it has to be something else.
Before another motion can be made.
Before another motion, that's what I was saying, was anything related to what was said. Okay, so it's been, okay, we have a, it's been moved in second, all in favor. Okay, it's only...
Been all opposed.
All opposed? Okay, with a motion in care of the Personnel Policy.
So if there's another motion that...
Look, so what do you...
Yes, I, I'd like to make a motion to accept the updates with the TikTok for legislation purposes and the two percent COLA. But I would also like to table the rest of the updates in lieu that we are allowed to review those and come back and bring that forward to council.
So that would be... Let me just get that real quick, just for the, for the minutes. So policy PD two point one one.
Why don't we just table the whole thing? Why, why not, why just put one thing in there? Just table the whole thing until you, until you get your updates?
The legis, well, when I went back and I reviewed everything, I think the legislature said that city updates for TikTok and any other thing, any other social media items should be taken care of November, by November twentieth of this year.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why I said update the TikTok and then, and the COLA, which we know that.
That's fine.
And then they give us the opportunity to read over the updates and then bring it back to council.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
We have a motion and it's...
Okay, so...
I make a motion to approve what you said. We had already made.
We have a motion and we...
We had a motion and second.
Okay, look, let, so we get, you made, Trina made the motion already, and now we need a second.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries.
All right, I'll bring it back to you.
Okay. Meeting's adjourned. I, I keep trying to take your pee and I won't shake.
Yeah, thank you. It's a servant, it's a pleasure, sir. Anytime you have questions.